This is the bottom order for the reorganization meeting for the Abbeville School Board. Can we all stand for a moment of silence, meditation, and holy light of God?
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of officers.
Ms. Mangle. Mrs. Brines.
Present.
Ms. Kripke. Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mrs. Bensher.
Here.
Ms. Howard.
Here.
Ms. Rupsky.
Here.
Ms. Plonenska.
Here.
I sit here.
Mr. Mangle is not present this evening and may have a medical procedure completed and just was out of the hospital recently. I talked to him earlier this evening and he is not able to make two meetings tonight with a medical procedure he had to complete in the first.
Moving on to public forum. Our public comments will be limited to agenda items at this time. There will be no opportunity for public forum during the work session and regular session later this evening. Secretarial, when the adopted agenda is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda adopted. Nomination of election of temporary president.
Of the three individuals who serve in that capacity, or what the school code referred to as school older members, now the district's Ms. Dunn, Ms. Brines, and Ms. Kripke.
I nominate Mrs. Brines, second.
The chair will entertain a mo-- oh, okay. Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to close nominations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Vote on nomination.
That can be a voice vote. That may be a voice vote.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
All--
I'm going to get that.
Yeah, nobody answered.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Presentation of election certificates. We have received election certificates. For the following individuals: David Howard, Ms. Charity Grabchuba, Ms. Betty Moser, Paul M. Lizika, am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah.
And Mr. Mangle. Mr. Mangle has been elected to two positions, the four-year term and the two-year term. We have been informed by the Election Bureau that Mr. Mangle has elected the four-year term. Therefore, there will be a vacancy as of tonight in the two-year term, which I will be glad to explain that procedure during the work session. Now, I understand we have a number of people who need to be sworn in, and that may be accomplished by our temporary president. New board members, re-elected board members would stand and raise their right arm. And we want to repeat after Ms. Brines.
No, you can do them all apart. Let's go ahead and state their names. Aye.
Aye.
David Howard.
Aye, Paul Plonenska.
Have been elected to the office of school director for the Abbeville Area School District, County of Fayette and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Do solemnly swear that I support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Say aye.
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 Congratulations. You'll have to start. Sometime in order to read from the speech and assign, also, we have a written motion. Back to you, man, temporary president.
Okay. Nominations for election of board president, or excepted now?
I nominate Pearl Brines.
I second.
You don't need to have a second. You can have any nominations if you were.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay. A voice vote on Pearl Brines as president. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nomination for vice president.
I make a motion for Ryan Rupsky.
Any other?
Make a motion that nominations be closed.
Second.
All those in favor of Ryan Rupsky as vice president?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nomination for secretary, remainder of Mr. Paul Dunn's four-year term.
I nominate Mrs. Betty Moser.
I'll second.
Any other nomination?
Motion carries.
All those in favor of Mrs. Moser as board secretary?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You don't need to worry about treasure because as we understand, Mr. Michael Dunn is still treasurer. That's a one-year term, and he would do that advantage, so he would remain in that position. I will tell you to schedule a meeting.
Currently, we're at the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 p.m. at Ebert Swady Elementary School. Work session proceeding Monday before meeting.
I make a motion to move the location to the high school auditorium.
Any second? Okay, second?
That dies for lack of second, although I'd like the election of the president also for lack of second.
Okay.
The only reason to put proposing that is that I think that there would be more accommodating seating, the acoustics could be better. I know there's a hard time for people hearing what's going on in meetings. It just seems like a better form. I know that Mr. King and I discussed this before, and he was concerned about a place and so forth. My suggestion would be that it was absolutely, you know, not compatible that during those moments we might move it. My understanding is that years ago, that this school would pay for actually different schools. So that's the reasons for proposing this question.
My only concern would be competing events that would be happening at the same time. Would you like-- would anybody like this? Would you two want to play?
I think kind of a Mrs. School Board type, I think the high school would be a good location.
Do we have a second?
I make a motion that we continue holding the meetings on the third Wednesday at 6:00 from the Ebert Swady Elementary School, Abbeville Elementary.
Does that have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Presently, we pay our solicitor, Andrews, and Price $600 per month and $100 per hour.
I make a motion to keep Mr. President's firm.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The FCCTI Joint Operating Committee. We need an appointment for this committee for Mr. Dunn's, for the remainder of Mr. Paul Dunn's three-year term. Do I hear any nominations?
I make a motion for Pearl Plonenska.
Second.
All those in favor of Pearl Plonenska, appointed to the Fayette County Career Technical Institute Joint Operating Committee for the remainder of Mr. Paul Dunn's three-year term, which expires December 2021, commencing in December 2019. In favor?
In.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we need an appointment, another appointment for that, for his three-year term.
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Ryan Rupsky.
Have a second?
I respectfully decline that nomination. Five places here is not Abbeville.
Do we have any other nominations? Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Nick will love yours. Should I nominate?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Kripke.
Are the meetings in the evening?
Meetings are Monday evenings. They commence at 5:30. It's a work session. At 6:00 is the regular meeting. They do the work session and regular meeting in one night, and they're always on Monday.
As much as I'd like to, but I have my husband my divorce.
I move that we appoint Mr. Mangle. All in favor? Okay, we've got one.
I think we can do, because he hasn't been sworn in yet.
Oh, that's right.
Regardless of his temporary capacity, he has 10 days from December 1st to be sworn in. He can be sworn in by a notary, as I understand. This Hirschberger is volunteer to Joe's house. So you'll be okay, because your vote tech meeting isn't moved over yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, you-- there's no meeting this month, is there?
No.
Okay.
That's really a shame.
So you have plenty of time. He has time to then tell you.
Let's walk and do it, I guess.
So we have--
I suspect it's probably a flag.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Maximally signature plate approval.
That is requiring we as a facsimile signature for our school officers.
Okay.
So that is a motion made and seconded and resolved.
We have a motion for the plate approvals.
Second.
All those approve?
Approved.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, utility payment approval.
It's a motion to approve one. Is it on payment of the utilities?
Yes, so you don't prefer any late fees.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. PSBA Legislative Council. It's open to any board member.
Do we have to point someone to this, Mrs. Dunn?
Not required, but they would help you in terms of monitoring it. And I don't believe you have to have that in the meeting to actually agree.
You don't. You don't currently. They send you literature and invite you to various things, but there's no requirement for this. Yeah, I'll volunteer, but if you don't have any comments.
Should I be in motion to this people?
Second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The present voting order for roll call votes is that the motion is made, the others will be called in random order except the president, who is called last. The president will serve from December 4th, 2019, to the first week of December, 2020. I will leave that into our reorganization meeting.
Congratulations.
Okay, let's get to work. I think I turn it over to Mr. Mitt.
Okay. Thank you for attending December's work session. And this time, I do have, I believe, all principals present. Do we have any questions for high school principal, Mr. Hutchinson? Middle school principal, Mr. Wilson? Middle school principal, Mr. Dillaw? Elementary, Mrs. Rosie. Any questions for Mrs. Rosie? Dr. Witt? Mrs. Baker? And currently, I do have Mr. Quisco, our special ed director, who is also operating out of Masontown Elementary. Any questions for Masontown, Mr. Quisco? I also have Mrs. Beazak, working out of Friendship Hill Elementary. Any questions for Friendship Hill?
I don't have any questions specifically with respect to the principals. I would like to move forward to getting a permanent principal at Friendship Hill. They've been operating without a permanent principal for how many months? I think that is something that should be addressed with a bit of everybody in that school.
I do plan on addressing that with the board in executive session, discussion of personnel reasons. So that is all my agenda, to talk to the board in the executive session about principals. And I give you brief. Mrs. Beazak, any questions for Mrs. Beazak pertaining to curriculum, elementary education, federal funds, anything of that nature? I know there were no board packets for December, so I think questions may be limited, but Mrs. Beazak is here. Any questions you may have?
I have a question. I don't know which she is, but I have a question about-- Okay, thank you. I have a question about the math books that we were talking about. How recently have we bought other math books for that grade level?
It's a cycle of, we had a five-year, six-year, six-year. It's time to revisit.
That often every six years?
Yes. And we did entertain, we have three presentations, three versions of different types of series. The last one was, fortunately, worked out that way. We got to do the last presentation. So now, it happens because everybody's together. I'll send out some surveys and some input forms to meet again. And some teachers are willing to buy them for you. And then we'll come back to the board with, who's prepared, or final decision. What can they do best, and we'll go from there. And again, we may have to look at it doing in a cyclic. We may have to look at financially doing a K2 first, and then looking at three, five, four, eight, two, three.
Thank you, Mrs. Beazak. Anything with secretary, curriculum, anything at all for Mr. Hutchinson? Mr. DuPont, athletic director?
I'm just getting ready to kick off the winter season, starting on Friday and Saturday with tournaments. Boys are at Penn State Fayette, shipoff tournament, and girls at Southmoreland. And the rest of the team will be heading to Shortridge, Houston. That's all I have. Just in Fayette, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. DuPont. Mr. Golden is not with us this evening. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them for you, or I'll have Mr. Golden get back to you personally. Any questions in the bar to the food service? Mr. Bowen with technology?
I just want to take this time to congratulate Mr. Brandon Berkshire and his students that participated in the Esports League this year. This is something new, the first year in doing so. They finished 22nd out of over 400 different teams. So my hat's off to them. They did a heck of a job. There's a lot of interest in the program, so we hope to see it continue. That's all I have.
Congratulations to our Esports League for our Abbeville. Mr. Quisco, special education. Any questions for Jared?
The only thing I'd like to add is we did submit our child fine report for BIMs, which is a good course in November going into December, so we did have that submitted into the state. Also had a Google Reenlight training for secondary teachers right before break, so that had a good reception with teachers and hopefully well let out soon with students and fellows.
Thank you, Quisco. Mr. Parton, transportation?
I don't have anything to report at this time, because I've been dealing with auditors on a daily basis. Other than that, it's nothing to report other than usual.
Any questions for Mr. Parton? Chief Maliki is not here this evening, but if you have any questions for security or school safety, Mr. Hutchinson, where I can answer them. Any questions for the safety of school security? Mr. Vouchik, financial?
Yes, I would like to discuss with the board tonight the timelines for the Act One budget and the preliminary budget, with our meeting being January 15th. If the board would entertain adding to our regular, our agenda tonight, authorizing administration to make available the 2021 budget as a proposed preliminary budget available for inspection beginning December 27, 2019, and to give the public notice on it before January 6th. If our meeting stays the same as January 15th, that's how everything will work out for the timeline. PPE actual deadline is January 29th, so we would either have to move our meetings or go with this motion that would actually put our budget out there for inspection.
I would like for us to open a special meeting Thursday to do our financials in the end of May before January 1st.
Yeah, this will be, just put this, this will allow us to just put it out there as available for other groups to spend, then discuss everything in January, if we have a special prior to our normal agenda meeting.
Another special meeting? We could have a special meeting in December here, I mean, definitely. Looking at, even on Wednesday, looking at Wednesday, December 18th. Would that be appropriate timeframe for the board to hold a budget meeting?
I kind of like the idea of publishing it and letting, I don't mind the idea of a special meeting, but I would like the community, I know that there's certain people that do take an interest in that, that might personally ask on input. So I wouldn't necessarily have the opposition in publishing it. We're having a special meeting to discuss it, and then that really could be some public community input as well.
I believe we would still publish it regardless, correct?
Yes.
So we would still publish that. This would just be a specific meeting to discuss budgetary, financial concerns, for the board. Do we want to set a meeting for the 18th? 6:00 here at Ebert. And to make sure we advertise it and post it.
Just like to add that we've been also very, very busy in the business office with the local auditors during the audit and the fiscal audit. The Homestead, Farmstead, Exempton Mellons will be held out by the end of this month, and that's one of the items on the agenda that we will put in as well. And we will file our Sterling Pax record for 2018 with the state.
Under maintenance, I do have some representation here from a couple of companies in regards to options for the replacement of the roof with the elementary. And I believe I have this Mr. Candy Auto here from Carlisle. Okay. Joe, if you could take the floor?
Also with, again, Tom Ferrantino, who's a corporate ops, who'd like to speak concerning the program, but he'd like to pose, I would like to--
My name's Tom Ferrantino. I'm for Carlisle Construction Material, right here in Pennsylvania. This project that you have ongoing and are looking at doing, we brought to our attention, and we wanted to come in here as a Pennsylvania-based company and talk about some of the things that we're able to do for you. Number one is Carlisle lives in Pennsylvania. We're taxpayers. We understand what everyone's going through. We understand that we don't want to have a school closed. So one of the big things that we're looking at is a way of saving you money. Over the years, three years ago, Carlisle hired me to come in and help them understand cooperative purchasing. Cooperative purchasing is what we're looking at doing possibly to procure this roof. So we're part of the Co-Stars contract, which I believe last year in May, we purchased two. We rent 150 trucks through the Co-Stars contract. So Pennsylvania Co-Stars contract is a contract that is basically owned by the state of Pennsylvania, and we came in and we understood what was going on with cooperative purchasing over the years. Cooperative purchasing, we saw, was charging 35% to two times the market value in many cases, just because there were single source awarded contracts. We needed one company to own those contracts, and they were your only way of going out and procuring a roof if you did not want to go out to a fair, open bid. What happens in that situation is when you do have a fair, open bid that you want to go and purchase a roof from, you may have contractors that will come in here and offer very low pricing. They may be an inferior contractor, which you may not do a very good job. So Pennsylvania came up with this Co-Stars program, which enables you to be empowered as a school district to get best value. And when I talk about best value roofing, we're talking about getting the best products. We're talking about getting the best contractors, and we're talking about getting the best negotiated price. So what we did, what we have been seeing this past year, because I've taken over the program for Carlisle, is we've been going into opportunities that school districts like yourself have, where roofing was needed. And we've been able to save many of the school districts $700,000, $800,000 on roofing projects that they were looking at with some of the other cooperative companies, because this is a PA company, and Carlisle, and we're working with the Department of Government Services. So currently, right now, at the Smithfield School, you guys have a Carlisle roof on there. And that roof was purchased in 1994, I believe. 1994. That was a 10-year roof. So I think that roof was done very well for you. 25 years later, that roof is still up there. Okay? In that 25 years, our technology has come a long way. So what we have is, we have a different option for you to actually continue with the program you have now, but extend it out another 20 years by giving you a different roofing solution. So we're not talking about a tear-off situation. Joe Candyada will talk more about this.
Okay. Thank you. We were initially contacted, and I came to school last week, and additionally, we were talking about doing a little tear-off. After I walked the roof, we did a couple forecuts. We found that there was some excessive ponding on the edges of the perimeter roof. And just the cost factor of picturing a new roof system, what we could offer as an alternative, I felt this was the best avenue for your school district and Smithfield Elementary. So in your packets, I put a scope of work together. I'll go through them briefly. I gave you some information just on the system. There's some samples of the product, and I'll go through that as I go through this scope. So first of all, what we'd have to do up there, we would have to do a scan roof to make sure that if there was any insulation that has been compromised, we would be able to replace in before we do that system. And in doing so, we put in a 10% factor into that to remove. So if that 10% factor is over and above, we have to do a square foot number. If it's under, it would be a credit If it's under, it would be a credit back from the contractor who would get the job. So that would be the first thing we would do. But then to prepare the roof after, you know, after the scan, we would, before we would, you know, take the wet insulation out, we would powder wash the whole roof, de-clean it, get all the debris, any loose dust from the rubber deteriorating over the years. And at the perimeters on the, on Smithfield, there was a lot of ponding that was sitting up there, okay? That water, in any good roof system, you want to go the water off that roof the best way you can. So the proposal we did, we're going to put new tapered insulation at the perimeter all the way down, on a 12-foot perimeter, okay, on the two ends, to drive that water back to the roof drapes, to move that off there. So, and that would be mechanically fastened, and with fasteners, or possibly with adhesive, that we're going to do the roof in a way. We would rework all the drains, put new dugs, reins, bolts, and we'd take that all apart to put the new system into that. And then we would install the fleeceback material, it's called the EPDM fleeceback, it's in your packets you see, that would go down with the adhesive, just to pack it with that too, it's a collapsible fast adhesive. We would put that down in the bead situation, and then use a 150-pound roller to roll that product out, so it compresses it all the way out, so you get almost 100% adhesion to the roof. And the Seamy technology is, again, is all much more advanced than it was in the past. Then we've also, we would remove, in doing so, we would have to remove the edge metal around the perimeter of the whole roof system. We would match that, put back the same type of material, we had to add wood blocking at the edge to accommodate that new tapered insulation. We would then install the new edge metal, there's some other metal up on top of the roof, there's some, they call it coping, in between the two roof systems, change all the flashing at the perimeter, and it would all be O5 material. At the end of the project, we would have our field service rep do a final inspection, and we'd be able to offer you a 20-year roof system, a total system with 55-homer roof speed warranty. And in that, to say that too, in the pricing, it would be, bonds would be included, good all down for billing wage, so there's, you know, everything would be covered out there. Anything, you know, less sure about would be permitting, if there would be a permit that we needed or not in this system. And of course, all the OSHA standards and safety practice would be, need to be, you know, required. Pretty much that's the system in one bit, so I don't know if we open up to questions, or if we wait, or...
Board, are there any questions? What timeframe from the beginning of project to completion?
Well, if it was awarded, you know, I mean, we would be able to, you know, possibly start first day of school time. And there wouldn't be a lot of disruption, because there wouldn't be a lot of debris coming off, or it would be some loading, in some degree, the old edge metal and such, but I would say it would definitely go be done within school year of start, for sure. There wouldn't even be an issue. It's just a matter of if you decide to do this roof project, and again, I think now's the time to try to do something, because now roofers are, their capabilities are open now. So you get it on the books, and you get it, you get it kind of quickly that way. I did not, the budget number we come up with, I come up with would be like $375,000.
For material and labor?
Materials and labor.
So one of the things you'll find is, earlier this year, Austin School District, which is Pennsylvania School District, contacted us in the same type of scenario, and they were told they needed to basically tear off the roof and put a new roof on. We went out there, we met with them, and they talked to three different cooperative companies, some of them you may hear from today, but we talked to them, and we were able actually to invest $20,000 into the roof to help them, that roof will last another five years where they can actually put money into their budget and get it prepared. So one of the things that, when I came on to Carlisle, I said to them, we have to show the public that we are more interested in putting the money into the school than having it reserved in the school for the students and the activities than putting on the roof where we can do it. And we've really made a conscious effort this year to make that happen, and we're willing to work with you to make that happen for your school district.
Have you had any projects local that you can add one?
We just got done with one, it was Cannon Mack, it was Wildenville Elementary. It literally just got finished, that job, very simple to yours, it was existing EPDM. We removed, it was a thermal scan done, we removed the insulation that was compromised, replaced it, did the fleeceback system over top while school was in session. So it's a, now that roof is a little bit different because it was a concrete deck, so there wasn't a lot of, you know, hammering or anything like that, but yeah, so that literally just got finished probably two weeks ago. And California School District, the, is proposed. Unfortunately, I guess there's a new superintendent and business manager there, so we may have to reinvent everything then, but... I'm looking at you, I do remember you. Good to see you. So I'm not sure where that stands. But I did reach out to peak the facilities manager to try to, in an audience again, the new business manager and the superintendent, to try to propose a new, the same system over top to what they have. That was on the high school and the elementary, or the middle school and elementary.
I think you already said it, so just to confirm, this is a 20-year, the life expectancy would be 20 years?
That would be warranted 20 years, my life expectancy? I would think 25, 30 years minimum.
You gotta take your roof, and it's 25 years later, from, the technology's come a long way. Any other questions?
Thank you, I would appreciate it. So your pricing would be Co-Stars?
Correct, I was at Co-Stars.
Now, are you simply providing the materials, and then we would bid out the supplier? Any installers? You can handle the whole thing?
We handle the whole thing. On their Co-Stars, back about seven years ago, they allow labor and installation to come back into the program, and we have to part our ancillary services, we do help with the design and build, and then installation that happened through a contractor. You guys pick the contractor, with our help, we would help you pick the best contractor. We do have one that came out and visited the other day, a contractor, and you would actually cut the purchase order to that contractor, because that contractor is acting as an authorized dealer under our Co-Stars contract.
So they would be certified?
They're certified, or that's the only installers we work with, they have to be certified.
And on top of it all, with Co-Stars too, if you decide one contractor, or two contractors, or three contractors, it's negotiable. You can still negotiate if you don't like, you know, the low bid doesn't mean it's going to work, or sometimes you like this person, and he's not the lowest bidder, or you could go back and, you know, you could negotiate, just like you do with other items in Co-Stars.
And we highly recommend that, we highly recommend that, we get three contractors out here, and you let them, they'll battle it out price-wise, because they'll be all authorized under us, let them battle it out, and then you pick who you feel most comfortable with, if it's not a low price. You feel who you're most comfortable with, and it's a very successful program.
Great, thank you. Sam Roberts, Garland Company, Sam, come on, please. Board, I have Sam Roberts here, he spoke to us in the past, and I asked him to help us with some options for the roof at Smithfield as well, with Garland.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Good to see everybody again, it's been a couple months, I guess. So after our initial meeting there, we proposed a replacement roof system. Spoke to Mr. Peggy, was looking for some other options to reduce costs there. And I went back in my notes, my photos, and I've been on the Smithfield roof minimum of a dozen, fifteen times over the years here, chasing nights across the roof system. And it is true, that roof system is at a point now where it's at the end of the house, okay? You've got the line out of the concrete, or the new hydro, or the medium, or it's been like span roof like that. But you're starting to see punctures really across the roof. I know I've chased these back of the building, the front of the building, really throughout the whole range. You're starting to see a lot of that puncture in the insulation and the underlying roof system of that particular building. So our recommendation, really, from our first recommendation a couple of months ago, is not going to change. You know, the restoration where it's whole and new membrane of the top of the existing membrane insulation, it is a fair idea, but I do believe from being on that roof many times over the past few years, I've been managing that roof system for five years now, that you have a significant amount of insulation in that particular roof. And I'm saying that just from the fact that we've chased these all over. Matter of fact, just a couple of months ago, when I was up on the roof, your facilities managers, Keith and Jim, we found quite a few punctures. And the issue with those punctures is they're being crossed across the roof system, because they're fasteners are up to the roof. So our recommendation is still to remove all of the existing insulation. Install new tapered insulation, get you up to energy code R30, save some money there energy-wise. Put a new, your whole roof system on that roof, new metal edge, fully designed in that roof system code. Same proposal that we really did to you folks about two months ago. It's not the easiest thing to do, it's not the cheapest thing to do, but it's the right thing to do for that school to ensure that we have a full roof system, and we'd save the environment a bit. So any questions? I mean, I know we spoke at Bine a couple of months ago about our recommendation. You know, we talked also about different permanent options for you folks. Quality of the roof system, thirty-year warranty, thirty-year warranty for our roof system. Any other questions?
I mean, I've heard some rumors, so I'm just going to ask, is Garland Company involved in litigation right now about price gouging and bidding process?
Not that I am aware of.
You're not sure of that?
I am not aware of that at all.
Thank you.
So your initial price that you gave several months ago is a foreign price, is that what you were telling us?
It's a conservative price, you know, we had local contractors come in, look at us, give us budgets. That budgetary range, we could give you some options to change the warranty a little bit, go from a flood and gravel servicing, maybe a tunnel, or a coated servicing, which is going to take away some of the costs and the less labor that Smithfield Elementary involved. But in general, it's going to be the same multi-poly roof system that you're referring to in that particular building, to give you that 30-year option.
Is your company based out of Ohio as well?
Please, Linda, hi.
You researched my name, what was your price last time?
Our budgetary range, I don't have the packet from it, 750 to 800, somewhere in that range.
Any other questions for Mr. Roberts? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you very much, Roberts, appreciate it.
Well, I did have Don Miller Company, they were on the roof over Thanksgiving break. Is there anyone here from Don Miller's Roofing Company? I know it was short notice, and they weren't sure if they'd be able to have someone here. But I'm not, I don't profess to be a roofing expert at all, but I did write copies of the email he had sent me in regards to, so I'll hand these out to the board, just for your reference. Don Miller Company, basically their scope of work, I'll just review what they had sent to me, was to remove the existing roof down to the deck and dispose of as improved landfill. Mechanically attach new tapered insulation system with average R30 to adhere EPDM roof system. Lash all walls to penetrations, install all new wood blocking to accommodate the new tapered insulation. To install a new fascia made out of 104 aluminum as well as new inch detail made out of the same, to remove all debris arising from the work. Issue a 30-year NBL warranty and to pay all prevailing wages. The price, estimated price is $535,000. Okay, optional ten-year system installed over top of existing half-inch HD ISO and adhere EPDM would be $416,000. Deck replacement is $7.50 square foot. Okay, so that's from the Don and Miller Incorporated, they're based out of Uniontown, Pennsylvania. And I have one more that I'll share with the board. And the last company that I had four squad with was Doro Last Roofing. And they're, is a little different. They routed the roof at Smithfield yesterday with Jim Kodak, my maintenance one supervisor. And after they did some forecutting of the roof and investigation, they came up with what they feel is our best and most cost-effective effective solution for Smithfield Elementary. The existing roof, metal deck, one-inch parallate tape EPS, which is seven quarter inches down to four inches, half fiberboard with fully hit rubber on top. The cores that they had taken yesterday were dry, and their recommendation is as follows. Remove metal edge, latches, rubber, and half-inch fiberboard. Check all EPS to determine if any is wet. If needed, they'll replace it with polyiso to match existing paint, at an additional price of $2 per square foot. With that being said, their budget number includes $500 in square foot of insulation replacement. They would install half-inch HD board, install 50 mil Doro, mechanically attach PVC, install custom fabricated parallate flashing, two-way vents stacked and curved flashing, and new drain sleeves, seven-inch two-piece metal edge that is included in the 20-year warranty. Roof would be inspected before 20-year warranty is issued. The approximate roof is about $35,000 square foot. The budget number for the above scope of work that they would perform is $200,000. This breaks down to $5.75 per square foot. Okay, so that's, yeah, I spoke to Jay Monteverde from Doro Last. He was not able to be here tonight, but said he would come back to our next meeting if you wanted to speak, be a part of it, in more detail about their system and their product, and answer the questions that you have in regards to their product. So that was Doro Last Roofing.
Is that like your materials?
His total price, from what he emailed me, was, for the above scope of work, was $2,000, and I do believe that was... What did I say? Two, I'm sorry, $200,000. But that, like I said, he's not here to answer questions, but he said that was for the above scope of work, so I can only assume that that would be materially related. above scope of work, so I can only assume that that would be materially. Janine Bonucci, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
I did ask Janine Bonucci, she's familiar with all of these systems, I think most of you are familiar with Janine, and I did ask Janine to come tonight and she could speak to us as an independent with her recommendation on what would be best and most cost-effective, you know, for our situation here at Smithfield. So, Janine, thank you.
Okay, so I just had, I just had a chance to review a few of those proposals. Obviously, I didn't see the Carla proposal, I did see the Garland roof, I did see the Don Miller thing, or the DDM, and I did see the Duro Last. With the Duro Last proposal, I'm not positive that they're co-stars or any sort of program where you can just procure a contract with them.
He did tell me that they're not co-stars, but they are, is there a TIPS or TIPS? He said it's like similar to co-star pricing, on the same basis.
TIPS is an intergovernmental cooperation group out of, it's for text. And TIPS, I'm trying to remember what the acronym means, the Interlocal, the Interlocal Protection.
Okay, so the DDM roof is a Versico roof, they're the same program, the same code source program that the Carla roof is. So they could be procured in the same way. The proposals are not apples-to-apples, totally different systems, totally different types of roofs, completely different. And so if you're looking at the price and saying, "I want this one for this price," you may not be getting the same quality of roof. So just, I don't know how you wanna address that with the different types of systems.
Does it serve the purpose? Does the cheaper one serve the purpose?
Well, I don't know which one's cheaper, 'cause I haven't seen, you know, the problem.
The other thing to comment on is on the insulation. Once you take the membrane off, you have to break that up to a minimum R30, not an average R30, that's the minimum R30. But that changes the game.
Is that by code?
That's by code. So that's a big difference. And when the Duro Last is saying, "We're taking the membrane off, we're gonna put a half-inch cord back down," and then again, that's not what you go. So you have to look into all that with the coefficients. And I think Don Miller's proposal keeps that average R30, that would not be correct either.
I think the average R30 is, you know, if the roof paper slugs, they're not requiring you to have an R30 out in the rain. There's a certain area beyond the drain that you're not allowed to have.
That's incorrect. You have to be R30, four feet off the drain, per cord. When you're four feet off the drain, it has to be R30. And that was consideration, we had R30, so not to lose that, keep the pricing down, give you a quality roof. And, you know, it's still kind of, you know, still adding insulation, like you get the paper, get the water to the drain, so that's something you definitely wanna talk about, because that would not be code, and the last thing to do is put a roof on it, they say it's not right.
So the way the insulation sits right now, the current insulation doesn't meet the current fire code, it's not proper type of insulation, if I'm not mistaken. If you do a full tear-off of the roof, and it's my understanding that you can negotiate with this contractor, you can negotiate with DDM, you can negotiate with Garland, to have them give you revised prices based on revised ones. So if you want something, each one of these people can revise them as close to you. But if you do a full tear-off of the roof, and you're, you know, if you're investing that money to put into the roof, I don't understand why you wouldn't do a full tear-off and button that thing up and make sure it's done late, you know? To insulate it properly, you get better energy efficiency in the building. If you renovate that building or make things inside that building, your roof needs code in every way. So I'm a little concerned about the lower wind uplift, fifty-five, you know, miles per hour. I'm used to seeing ninety miles per hour in wind uplift ratings, so, but I'm sure they can revise their proposal to give you, you know, if you wanted, a wind uplift that needs code to give you that, you know?
Is it fifty-five, Mark?
I don't think it is, I think ninety.
It's a standard, the industry is fifty-five, you go off, but that, with that system, might go off around seventy-three. And that, that's not an issue. Ninety mile per hour, you do the different coverboards that you have to put on in the system, like you were saying about tearing off. And the reason, you know, again, the reason I proposed it is, was it costs time, give you a good occupation, because I think the work and strain would cost.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, we could, we could block whatever it is.
So the Duro Last system, I don't know how much time you must spend on this, but the Duro Last system is a PVC system. And it's, the millage that they gave you on the roof is a residential-grade millage, so it's a low mill. And all the proposals were sort of all over the map, whether they were gonna install new wood blocking at the edge, edges for the new tempered, the new tapered height, whether they were gonna replace your roof drains, because you could have corroded roof drains up there, and there's no point in putting a new roof on if you're not gonna replace a corroded roof drain. So some of those things, I think you would wanna negotiate before you pick anybody, and make sure that they're gonna do those things to button up the roof. You don't wanna spend, I mean, it's expensive to put any one of these roofs on. And I don't think you wanna spend that kind of money and not have it buttoned up. You know, regardless of the warranty, if, you know, if it leaks, they come out and fix it, but it's still leaked, you know, and it costs you, and it costs you a leak. So there's systems, the EPDM roof with a fleece pack. That fleece pack gives you a nice adhesion. I don't know how well it adheres to an insulation that's been there, or an EPDM system that's been there. Normally, I see those fleece packs on a board, like a hardboard, which is what Duro Last proposed. The DDM system is a complete tear-off with just new insulation, new board, and it's actually a ninety-mill membrane, but, you know, that can be negotiated. I think they put the ninety-mill in there because they were trying to match year warranty with Garland. But they could probably do a sixty-mill. But Carla could probably do a sixty-mill too. So it's sort of up to you to make up your mind, you know, kind of what price range you wanna be in, and what type of system you wanna have. The Garland roof is a two-ply system, and it's not rubber, it's an asphalt, two-ply built-up roof. One's, you know, this one and the DDM roof are, you know, mechanically attached or applied with an adhesive. I think the Garland roof is typically torched down. People's, you know, will say the Garland roof has more seams because the sheets are narrower, so more cause for leak. They'll say that these membranes don't hold up as long as their membrane, because their membrane is asphalt. So, you know, it's all just kind of where you wanna be. The thing about a Garland roof is the warranty, they have a very sound warranty. They offer lots of inspections while it's being installed, and then they come out and do maintenance inspections as the roof lets on. And they maintain the roof. So it's almost like in the warranty, you're buying maintenance on the roof. But that makes the dollar from where it goes in the beginning. You don't get that same thing out of, you know, a Carla roof or the Versico roof. But the nice thing maybe about the Versico roof is the contractor's local. You know, he's right, in Union Town, can show up at whenever you need him to service the roof. So there's a lot of things to consider with that price, none of it's apples-to-apples, what you might have there.
Question, what twenty-year warranty regardless of which company offers it, are those apples-to-apples?
No. No. Everybody has their own warranty, some of them are prorated, some of them are not prorated. Like I said, there's a lot of maintenance that's built into the Garland roof, and my experience with Garland is they do service their warranties very well. But, you know, EPDM roofs have been around forever, this, you know, this is a company that's, you know, actually, I think Versico's part of Garland.
No. Versico?
Oh, part of Garland.
Carla Construction.
So it's, they're kind of the same company, and I think the warranty backed up by Carla, who's been around forever, and they're a consulting company. So I'm a little leery about the Duro Last. I mean, I just, I just don't think I would recommend that at all.
Not to put you to the sweat, so if you don't have enough information at this point to answer this question, you take your time, but if, you know, if we were a rich, full district and the sky was the limit in terms of price, obviously, you can afford the best quality product out there. But from what you've seen of the different proposals, other than the fifty-five mile per hour wind issue, did you see anything that made you think that this is not appropriate, this is not gonna work? I mean, let's face it, we all can drive Mercedes in this kind of world in terms of money, but that is, that's just reality for us, and we need to think.
Yeah, I think the Duro Last roof is real iffy to me, whether that would be the option or not, I really, I don't think that company has a history that you can count on, and it's a residential-grade membrane, and I just don't think I would do that.
As a practical matter, why would it work on a house without this going?
Well, it's a lot larger roof area, it's a lot more exposed roof, there's a lot more traffic on the roof for maintenance and equipment and things like that. And it's just, it's a, you know, it's, it's not a tested, tried product, you know, you're, you know, when you put a little roof on your house, you might expect it fourteen thousand dollars, but when you're invested, you know, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, you wanna make sure that's backed up somewhere by someone, the whole company, so. But as far as the question about, you know, just the value for your money, EPDM roofs have been around for a good long time, you know, they end up leaking, you patch them, and they leak through the pass, but they don't, you know, there's no history of complete failure really in an EPDM roof. Same thing with a, with a built-up two-ply roof, you know, there's no history of failure in that. But it is a more expensive system, and you are getting more, a more expensive warranty. But I think you can negotiate, you know, with what you want, with any one of these proposals, and get a number in your wills. I really don't know about the tear-off of the roof. The reason I'm uneasy about the tear-off is the situation when you put the roof on. You know, usually when they do the tear-off, they try and dry out any wet insulation, they replace any insulation. So if they're taking out insulation that's wet, they're gonna be replacing it with a different type of insulation sitting beside it, you know? And you can have weather events while you're roofing. And so now you've got, you know, tear-offs that you're trying to dry out, you're trying to get them wet, or trying to get them dry. You know, a lot of the value of your roof is in the quality, if you put it on there, what the weather conditions are like when you do that. So I would recommend a full tear-off, but it would be, but, you know, that's a matter of your budget.
Last month, a member of the public, Jared Handel, came forward with the idea of steel rusted roof, a company that was looking for test roofs. We reached out to that company, we reached out, and...
That was named the Carla.
And actually, we, we actually, when we first addressed the roof, it brought my attention that we did have a new system that we could have put on here, but that required a complete tear-off. When we got up on the roof, we determined that a tear-off was not needed. We could do a complete tear-off, obviously, our number would be different, but we determined it wasn't necessary for this roof that we have up there right now to put, to do a tear-off. As I said, any insulation that they find up there that's a little bit wet, will be damaged, they will replace, but we're not letting them do a tear-off, we can do a roof layover, basically, layover to the back.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? What is there, have you been on the roof? I have. Is there a machine or anything, everything on there?
There's some units, yes.
What would you do with, how would that be handled?
Well, we would, we would take any flash material around that and take that off. And with the new flash material off. And terminate, tie a flash of the new metal coming out. So you're getting, you are getting the roof, and again, just, just, on the same, the reason we proposed this was, because, you know, we felt that this would give you the best quality of class for the situation you people are handling.
Another question, another one. Am I correct, did you say that the present roof on Smithfield is a car lot, correct?
Yes.
And it has exceeded...
Yeah, it was put on in nineteen ninety-four. Actually, we're checking the ten-year warranty.
Mrs. Beazak, can I have you come up to the front, please? I have a representative here from Johnson Mathie. If you could also come to the front?
Sorry, just, you know, wanted to recognize Johnson Mathie. A couple of weeks ago, they had a cleanup along One Nineteen, they had dogged a highway, and, and, long story short, this is Beazak and I invited him to lunch in the business office, and, you know, kind of had some conversation with him. And Johnson Mathie had, on their own, with their employees, have worked to raise a significant amount of money, that they did on their own, it wasn't solicited, they just wanted to be a good community partner. They're in our school district here, they're a worldwide corporation, and they have a plant in, on, in the business park over off of Big Six Road. And their employees of Johnson Mathie on their own went and did fundraisers, selling whatever they sold to raise money. And they come to us, asking us, you know, not like I say it might donate money that they have raised, but their employees of Albert Gallivan. So with that being said, I'll let Mrs. Beazak go from here.
I just wanna clarify that they didn't just come in from cleaning and eat pizza and then gave us money.
No, no.
Come on in and we'll give you money. No, they did, Mr. Peggy said, reiterate, what was interesting, and what was so unique about this, this huge company, obviously, it's an international company. And they did, they made with their efforts real grassroots. So it wasn't that they rode on hotels with their international status, they just, the true employees located in Smithfield that worked and had just unactivities of work and carried it out throughout the regular workday. And they just showed up, and they're going to, I hope, sort of make this kind of like a type of a tradition each year, and, you know, anything that we can do to support them and to support their efforts in the community. It's just really nice, that, again, it's just not a corporate check, it was the employees. And this is Jill Tennant, and this is Mark Headline, who are quality controllers, and they are here to present all of us, I mean, I'm just here just to take, but it is, it is for all of us, and it is going to be donated to the elementary, and hopefully, we will rotate through elementary schools, because the goal here is to buy chrome bolts, thirty chrome bolts with a chrome book part. So they did an amazing job, I mean, it really is, is great collaboration between corporations and communities, so we're very fortunate to have them. You want to chat here?
Mr. Price, during the work session, you wanted to mention about filling the vacant board seat.
Yes, I believe each of you has a very short memo in front of you that I asked to deliver to you, and I'll summarize it for you. The vacancy for the two-year term starts today. And that means that between now and January 3rd, 2020, the school board pursuant to the school code is given the opportunity to fill the vacancy on the seventh. That's a 30-day calendar day, grace period. If the vacancy isn't filled by the school board itself within that 30-day period, 10 resident taxpayers can file a petition with the Department of Police and State of County and request that the court makes the appointment. So if that 30 days goes by and that petition is filed, then the court will pick somebody, obviously has to be somebody who lives in the district, to fill the vacancy for the two-year term. After the 30 days, and if no petition is filed, the school board's ability continues until a petition is filed to fill that appointment. If you fill it, it requires five votes. Five from the votes that fill it with the individual. And importantly, any meetings, conversation in terms of interviews perhaps, if you go that route, or whatever your choice is, that you are not allowed to have an executive session in, under the sunshine law. That's an exception to executive sessions, an exception to the exception, in fact. So any meetings regarding the appointment of this vacancy, filling this vacancy, is required to be done in open meetings.
I would add an agenda for our regular, for our voting meeting to seek letters of interest. And I thought it would be appropriate at our December 18th meeting to have anybody that's interested to come in, like we did when Mr. Beazak was appointed.
You can do, it's up to you guys, to the full board, but as long as that meeting's advertised as an open meeting.
I would like to make a motion to, we were told Paul Beazak, I thought he was going to cherish that.
I think if we're not going to take letters of interest, I would like to make a motion to appoint Hannah Schuhr to the board.
What I would suggest to you is, following your work session, you're going to have a voting meeting. That would be the place to decide which way to go. And if there are nominations tonight to fill the vacancy, that is made, and you do a roll call vote. Each individual board member votes and put one of the nominees. And if one of them goes on as five, that is your replacement for the next three years. So I would do that as your regular voting meeting after your work session. Are you having any executive session?
Yeah, there will be an equal executive session.
Are you going to do public comment before the executive session?
We can do public comment before the executive session.
That might be more preferable.
One other thing before we can start the regular meeting is last month, when I presented the PowerPoint on the potential for closing the school, the first step you have to take in that is to schedule a public hearing that I mentioned last month. I didn't know if the board wanted to go in that direction, to schedule a public hearing for the potential closing of Smithville Elementary, or if you do not want to schedule a public hearing. Because if we are going to still, you know, if that is going to be considered as an option, we are required to advertise that public hearing for a minimum of 15 days before you can have it. So is that something the board would want added to the agenda to schedule a public hearing?
I would not, quite frankly, I'd have to make a motion at the car lot, start immediately and see what they need to throw at the board.
I'm so honored with that, but we need somebody to vote for raising taxes. If one, one good roof saw didn't vote to raise tax.
If you did promise me that any increased taxes would mean, would equate to no closing of any of our elementary schools for the next 10 or 20 years, I would support that. But an increase taxes does not necessarily equate to that, and I think the public should be well aware of that. You guys, you guys could, we could choose to raise taxes and still close elementary. So if there's, if somebody wants to put in write-ins, then they can guarantee that I'll support that.
Okay, so I'll take that as, if we're not, if we're not scheduling a public hearing for the closing of Smithville Elementary, and we can talk about putting on the agenda for either tonight or the 18th to get, make a decision on the specs, the roof, and the company that's going to perform the work. So I think that would be. So I know that we don't want to crowd the budget meeting on the 18th with other items, but I think instead of trying to make the decision tonight, put it on the agenda, a company that you're going to go with, we need to have further discussion and move, if you're going to move on putting a roof, I think the sooner the better, so we have better opportunities and better pricing for the roof and the company that we select for Smithville Elementary.
When you say further conversation, is that going to be the conversation of public meetings?
Definitely. That's what I'm saying, it would happen to be on the 18th. All right, that concludes our work session, and we can move into the.
The regular meeting agenda will include a motion on filling the board's vacancy, is that correct?
I'm going to make a motion first to seek letters of interest.
Okay, so what, two motions are possibly. I just didn't want to get into amending the agenda, because we're really doing that right now. One other item, just so we're clear, there will be on the agenda, again, to the public comment audit if they wish, there will be on the agenda the motion that Mr. Belzick recommended to go ahead and get that preliminary budget prepared for discussion and advertisement, as well as to discuss that on the 18th. Is that correct? Do you get that in words?
And just for clarification, then, if the public forum would include any community input on who they would like to see appointed to the board? If anybody has anything they would like to add along that.
Yes, that's going to be on the agenda. I can hear your public comment right now, so we don't have to go around. On that and present, if you were to go into the voting meeting now, you would also become a roll call.
All right, let's call the order to regular meeting of the Alvin-Gallivan School Board. Roll call of officers, please.
Mr. Beazak?
President.
Mrs. Beazak?
President.
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here. Here.
Thank you. We're going to move into public forum. Do we have anybody that would like to speak this evening?
Before we start public forum, I would like to take a moment. This, we were going to do this last month, but the gentleman from PSBA could not be here and was going to be here this evening. He emailed me this afternoon, and unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here, be here this evening. So I would like to take a moment and recognize a few of our board members, past board members for their years of service on the Alvin-Gallivan Area School Board. Long-term school directors are being honored across the state by the Pennsylvania School Boards Association and local board meetings. School directors are recognized for years of service from eight years to 36 years. This evening, I would like to recognize Mr. Edward Colbank and Mr. David Howard, members and a past member of the Alvin-Gallivan Area School Board, for serving and recognizing their 20 years of service on the Alvin-Gallivan Area School Board. They are being presented a certificate which adds into the Pennsylvania School Board Association on role of school board service. I'd also like to recognize past board member, Mrs. Janet Swaining. She's been a member of the Alvin-Gallivan Area School Board, and she is receiving recognition for 24 years of service. And she will be presented with a plaque also adding her to the Pennsylvania School Boards Association on role of school board service. It is truly commendable for their years of dedicated volunteer service to children, to the community, and public education. School directors continually are spending more of their personal time on school-related activities. 54% of them devote 16 hours or more a month to school board business. That shows a real commitment on their part. According to Mr. Jim Somerville, PSBA representative, these individuals put in on the average about two and a half worst days per month of non-paid volunteer service as school directors. They exemplify leadership and dedication, giving themselves to their communities, students, and public schools. Their efforts along with those of their fellow board members reflect their dedication to giving our children the opportunity to gain knowledge through the best educational system possible. It is my extreme honor to be able to present Mr. Colbank, Mr. Howard, and Mrs. Swaining, their respective honors from PSBA for their years of service for the Alvin-Gallivan Area School District. I would like to ask all three of you, please come forward. Mr. Colbank, for 20 years of service, thank you, sir, for the special service and work for us. And Mrs. Swaining. Why do you keep it like that? You stay here for a quick picture, Mr. Colbank, as I move this mic.
Is there anyone here for public forum? Welcome. Please state your name, your address, and if you were to respond.
We actually have the students from the Smithfield Elementary Student Council. So if you guys will join us, please. I have been very well behaved.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Reed. I am 10 years old and I live at 28 Middle Lane in Smithville, Pennsylvania. I have been attending Smithville Elementary since kindergarten, and I am currently in fifth grade. I feel that I have received a wonderful education here and that I am well prepared for middle school next year. All the staff and teachers are outstanding. I understand that this is an overschool, but one of the greatest ones in my opinion. Many times, we only tend to realize how very much we need all these schools such as Smithville until it's too late. When I searched up what is the best elementary school in the Alvin-Gallivan District on Google, Smithville Elementary came up first, and it was rated five stars. I love all the teachers and they encourage me to be all that I can. They taught me a lot of new topics to prepare me for my future. I believe teachers who work at Smithville work great as a team and love to work with kids. And if it closes, they may lose their job or replace them. I also love the extracurricular activities at Smithville, such as fall festival, theme day, and class parties for special holidays. We even make special items for our families, such as Mother's Day and Christmas. The teachers encourage us to be creative and to have fun with our friends instead of having to work all the time, and not all schools do that. When I graduate in 2027, I would be honored to say that I spent my elementary years attending Smithville Elementary. One of the activities I look forward to most, a glad recent time, is the walk and going back to see the school where it all began and to share the wonderful moments and memories of the teachers and staff. And in closing, I think we should keep Smithville Elementary open, and I hope you feel the same way. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Foxandella, fourth grader, student council, yeah, student council of the Alvin-Gallivan Elementary. I want to tell you some of the reasons why the school shouldn't be closed. Students that struggle to learn will struggle more and fall behind when being put in larger classrooms. This will also cause children to get less of a good education, because teachers will have less time to give students one-on-one attention when they struggle with learning something new. Our bus rides will become longer, which will cause us to get up even earlier than we already do. This means we will lose more sleep, and that will cause us to be less focused during the day. It will also affect our learning ability and the education we deserve. Putting us into different schools will give a lot of kids fear and more stress trying to deal with new surroundings, new kids, and teachers. If you close down our school, the Smithville community will also suffer, meaning people will move to Smithville so their young children can attend Smithville Elementary because it is a blue ribbon school. My grandfather, who is a retired president of Potomac State College and professor at West Virginia University, said that our teachers, structure, and classrooms are the nicest he sees in years. Also, some of our wonderful teachers will lose their jobs, the community will lose its school, and students will suffer as a result. On behalf of the students at Smithville Elementary, I would ask that you don't close our school. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else for public forum?
I'd just like to comment, there's a lot of adults that can't get in front of a room like this and speak, so you guys did an exceptional job. Thank you, come in.
Welcome, state your name, your address, and you have floor for the pod.
My name is Rich Berndsworth. I live at 352 Penrose, or in the town of town. Every month, I come to these meetings for the last few months, and on the drive here, I think, I'm not going to say anything, I'm not going to say anything, and then every month there's something. Um, not, not that. With consideration of the two-year board seat open and things hanging in the balance as of tonight, I was hoping I was going to be able to submit an application, possibly interview. I did have letters of consideration ready because I just wasn't sure, so I'd like to read that. I also have one for each one of you that I'd like to give you. My name is Rich Berndsworth, as I said, and I'm asking for your vote to appoint me to the open position of the two-year term. I've lived in Alvin-Gallivan. I've lived in Albert Gallatin District for the last 18 years and I currently have a daughter who attends Albert Gallatin North. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer and an outstanding member of my community. I work full-time as a nurse coordinator at WVU Medicine in the Department of Hospitalist Medicine. The position I'm in, I actually was given that position and built to now over four positions. My work ethic, attendance, and dedication are something I pride myself on and I've only missed three days in over five years of employment. I personally note the importance of a quality education and current involvement. As Mr. Plinett's can account for, my vice record is not so impressive. Although I come from a loving and hardworking family, I was not encouraged and I did only what I had to do in order to graduate. In fact, I did so poorly in my senior year that I admit that I fell so far behind that I had to go to summer school to earn my diploma. After years of working at nowhere jobs, I was afforded the opportunity to go back to school to become a nurse. At 30 years old, it was the hardest decision I'd ever done. I had to learn to study for the first time. I had to learn to apply myself, achieve my dream. I studied for the entrance exam and even had to hire a tutor to help me. I passed the entrance exam in October 2012. I graduated LTM School with the help of my family, patients, tutors, and successfully have a career now. I see every day the quality education that my daughter receives through this district. My daughter was chosen last year to be placed in both Advanced Math and ELA. The outstanding education she has received enabled her to score even higher than the average on the PSSAs. She's been able to excel through hard work, encouragement, and most importantly, excellent teachers. The education of our district, the education of our children within our district should always be the number one focus of the school board. I'm aware with this seat comes other tasks, such as legal, confidential, financial, athletic, executive, and interviewing processes. These are all tasks that will take time and dedication. Time and dedication that I am willing to give for the betterment of our district and the children attending. I have no agenda in asking you for your vote to appoint me other than the children of our district and their education. And I would appreciate, I do appreciate your time and consideration and for the look at this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Your jurisdiction of residence?
My name is, my name is Arlo Stoker, 16 Stewart Street, Smithville. And as we're speaking here, I have to stand up here because people in the back of the room, have you heard, have difficulty hearing these school board members and discussions? Somebody, I don't know if you have to move closer to your phones or your microphones because back here, I have to move up closer to hear the conversations going on back and forth from your contractors. Now, it's loud now, but the other gentleman was here earlier, he was standing back here. Now, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me back, sir? So keep that in mind when you're addressing the crowd that we have, to get closer to your microphones. That's all I wanted to say.
Madam President, there is a need for executive session for personnel. Your right, please.
Adopt the agenda as presented?
No. As I understand it, there is a proposed amendment for addition in the agenda, and that would be to seek applicants and interview, seek applicants to the board vacancy two-year term and interview and appoint at the December 18th, 2019.
When you say interview, you should just go public speaker in the meeting?
I think that's what you guys named it, so.
Then I'll make the motion to amend the agenda and add that.
Is there a second?
Hold on, you're still on whether or not you're going to do it.
Oh, okay.
Whether that's going to be added to the agenda. That died for a second.
Yes.
Target here. Then the alternative added to the agenda will be under Administrator of Item 9B to consider tonight nominations to fill up the two-year vacant seat.
If that's the case, unnominated, Hannah Jordan.
Well, let, you can do that nominations, we'll get to that item. If there is a second for that, pay a motion back. And we have to wait till we get there. Yeah, but it would be added as Item 9B Administrator.
He doesn't make it.
Nine. Oh, you have, I'm sorry. Nine B. Because that would be Item 9B, not B. That requires a motion and second to add that to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to consider nominations to fill the vacant seat?
Well, you're not nominated first.
Adding it to the agenda.
To the agenda. I'll second it.
All in favor? Is there a discussion?
Oh, only, only I'm going to oppose it just because I think that we, in terms of amending the agenda for that, I'm opposing the amendment because I really think that we should take letters of interest from anybody in the community who might have an interest.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
So that would be Item 9B, not B.
Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion amended. Approve the minutes of the meeting held on November 20th, 2019 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Financial. Grant permission to pay the following bills and payroll for December 2019. Do I say these all at once or each line?
You can do blanket approval if you wish. If anybody quotes no on either of those, I'll just abstain.
Okay, we'll do blanket approval. Bills, utilities, insurance, and contractual obligations paid at the end of the previous month in the amount of $2,212,142.42. Current month general fund bills in the amount of $256,905.48. Utilities, capital reserve, and other bills due upon review by superintendent and the controller.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Approve Act 1 mailing not to exceed $4,500.
Question, what exactly is that for? My apologies.
You are required each year to mail out a notice to taxpayers who have not property owners, who have not taken advantage of the unstead possession. Even though they, every year get that opportunity, you're required to still do it. And that's the cost of doing that.
Okay, where were we on that? Do we have, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, we need to make an appointment. Ryan, was that yours before? Southwest Regional Tax Bureau with a 2020 representative for one year and another representative as an alternative.
I'm just the primary representative for the past two years. I've been asked at the board to appoint Tim Belcheck as the primary senior on the Southwest Regional Tax Bureau. And if you move, if you move, I'll short.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. We're going to appoint Mr. Belcheck as to the Southwest Tax Regional, Southwest Regional Tax Bureau, 2020 representative for one-year term and Ryan Kurupski as an alternative.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Any correspondence?
Yes, I would like to again thank the Johnson-Mattie Corporation for their generous donations and raising funds to donate laptop, oh, I'm sorry, Chromebook, 30 Chromebooks in the park for our elementary school. So thanks again to Johnson-Mattie.
Solicitors report?
No report, Madam President, but I would like to thank the board for appointing us and I appreciate it. Right, yeah. How dangerous is school districts? It would be hard to say by actually.
Okay, curriculum and instruction. Request approval for Addendum Number 1 of the June 5th, 2019 Approved Agreement between Albert Gallatin Area School District and Intermediate Unit 1 for federal programs non-public services. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Personnel. Award Rebecca Martinko the seven-hour cafeteria position in AG South Middle School according to contract.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So moved. Excuse me. Motion carried. Grant very commonality?
Common unit.
Common unit. An unpaid leave of absence from January 13th, 2020 to January 28th, 2020 as permitted by the collective bargaining agreement. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Accepted retirement of Robert Robinson Minczynski, middle school instructor effective January 9th, 2020.
Another second.
All in favor?
Aye. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Robinson Minczynski for her dedicated years of service to the Albert Gallatin Area School District for public education. May you have a long, healthy, fruitful retirement.
Administrator. Grant permission to add the following substitutes pending receivable documents. Nonprofessional Robin Darnell, professional Rebecca Hall.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Approve the following WVU student nurses for clinicals at various times throughout the district pending receipt of clearances. Margaret McCannon, Catherine Farson, Miranda Gable, Allison Harold, Lindsay Morris, and Elizabeth Purty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Grant use of AG North Cafeteria to AG North Middle School ban on April 2nd, 2020 for 4:30 PM to 9:00 PM for a paint and snack. Contact is Kate Warmstrong.
So moved. Second.
Motion pass. No, he doesn't. And I'm on TV. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Consider nominations to fill the vacant seat.
I nominate Hannah Jordan.
Hold on a second. Now, this candidate's Jordan?
Yes.
Doesn't require a second for nominations, you can do a bulk call vote and each board member will state who they are voting for. And remember, it takes five votes, even though we only have seven questions left. Just call.
Mr. Hall.
I'm sorry, the board's second. But explain you have two hours. It doesn't matter, but when you go around, each board member says instead of voting for Mr. Dunham, for Ms. Jordan. And again, it takes five votes for one of those candidates to be voted.
Mr. Dunham?
Paul Dunham.
Mr. Howard?
Paul Dunham.
Mr. Kurupski?
I'm not voting for either of you because we have checks and balances in this Commonwealth and we could let the courts dissolve, fill this vacancy and appeal to the board to not be considered a cattle.
Mr. Flanska?
Paul Dunham.
Mrs. Fajal?
I'll call back.
Mrs. Krupa?
Hannah Jordan.
Mrs. Francis?
Okay, the vote was five for Mr. Dunham, one for Ms. Jordan, one exception, therefore Mr. Dunham will be reappointed. And we will have to arrange a statement.
The next regular meeting will be held on January 15th, 2020. The meeting will be in the Bevird Swainy Elementary School Cafeteria, but there will also be a special financial meeting for the budget on December 18th, 2019 at, yeah, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Motion, do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.